Okay. Welcome to the Troy Planning Commission meeting for March 25th, 2015. We are now in session. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Mrs. Mahan.
Here.
Mr. Forrest.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
All members are present.
First matter to come before the commission is the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was on March 11th, 2015. Do any of the commission members have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Is the motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Second.
They're second by Mrs. Mahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they are accepted. Next matter on the agenda is rezoning request, parting lot 6047. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, but I don't know if you want to remove it from the table first?
Yeah, we have to do that.
Move to remove it from the table.
There's a motion to remove it from the table by Mr. Titterington, or is there support?
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now back on the table. All is taken.
All right. Thank you. We do have a staff report. As you know, with the last two planning commission meetings, a request was heard regarding the senior living facility as a planned development on Town Park Drive. I won't go through all that since we've already spent two meetings on it. We've kind of narrowed it down to two issues. One is the protective covenants restrictions and the other one is a traffic study. So we'll start with the protective covenants restrictions. I thought we would just go through this. I put it up on the screen. I didn't know how you wanted it to be, just to go down through the recitals and the purpose and/or we can start with any comments you guys have. However, the Chair wants me to proceed.
Well, if all the commissioners have had the opportunity to review them, and they've had the opportunity, whether or not they reviewed them or not, I don't know. But if anyone has any questions or comments, why don't we entertain those now? Hearing none, I'm going to get started. First of all, protective covenants restrictions. This is not an agreement with the City of Troy. It's incorporated into a document that becomes a declaration by the owner that says, okay, my property, which I now own or will own, and these will then be incorporated into my deed reference, are incorporated into this property and the City of Troy need not be a signatory party to the agreement. So that's the first change I would suggest that they make. In the purpose clause, the use of any portion of property shall at all times conform to the applicable zoning ordinances. Are we concerned about them being also subdivision ordinances or any of the other ordinances? Why don't we just take out the wood zoning so that they all at times conform to the applicable ordinances of the City of Troy? The next question I had on the standards, are these taken right out of our subdivision regulations?
Um, zoning code, yes. They meet the requirements, yes.
Okay. The next question I had was on the construction, the construction materials. It says four attractive sides of high quality rather than creating a front elevation of significantly different materials from side and rear elevations. I'd like to see something in there that's more specific, whether it be 80% stone, 70% brick, 5% vinyl, wood veneer, whatever it is. I would think that we would want to make sure that at this stage in time, if we approve a planned unit development, we know what the heck we're getting. And I think the construction materials are important.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Titterton.
Tim, didn't we not have three examples at the last meeting, three different elevations? Would it be appropriate to specify which elevation that we want as part of that? Would that be specific enough or do we want any more?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, as far as the one, two, three, I would like to see
those within the ordinance themselves, whether it's an attachment to the ordinance or, you know, if you take a look at a map, excuse me, a picture like that, we don't know what the elevation exactly is. Is it 17 feet high of brick and stone with three feet of vinyl on a 20-foot building or what? You know, if you put in the ordinance the fact that it's, the front has to be 70% of stone or 70% of brick or something along those lines, at least we will measure. That's the rationale I have.
One of the things I always want to bring up is under D, building material, I did talk to Mark Murphy about that, whether having the option, and they were actually for the stone option as well.
That would be elevation C?
Be elevation C. So I thought maybe if we could adopt that, the prototype as exhibit or attach it to this and say as exhibit A or option C in exhibit A, then we would actually have that incorporated into the covenants.
And that would be fine if it's amended to say, and it has to have a percentage of stone on the facing.
Okay.
Whatever that percentage is, if it happens to be 70%, that's fine, put it in the ordinance. That way, if something happens that they put 60% on, we can go ahead and hold the feet of the fire and put the other 10% out. In paragraph D, it talks about, in the second sentence, "All major equipment, including but not limited to air conditioning equipment, heating equipment, electrical transformers, shall be screened from view with material consistent with the building material." Should we not also put in there dumpsters?
Yeah.
I know we have a provision for trash and waste and refuse in the next paragraph, but it just seems like we're omitting something that we do want to go ahead and have covered.
Okay. We can include that in there if you'd like. I don't think Mark would have any objections to that.
And when we get down to waste and refuse in that next paragraph, I'd like to add at the end that, "And shall be kept in clean and sanitary condition."
Okay.
When we're talking about dumpsters and trash containers. Now, I'm just continuing here. Does anybody else have any comments up to this point? Your Honorable, if not, off the floor. Paragraph G, "No outdoor storage shall be permitted except for minimal amount of storage which shall be permitted in the carports." Define minimal for me. Because it's not in here, and I don't think whatever definition you can give me will satisfy me, but I need to have some sort of definition as to what minimal is. Is it going to be a square footage, how much square foot, you know? Their minimal might be 100 square feet, our minimal might be 20 square feet, so I need to know what that is.
Okay. Yes.
H, fence. A lot of the determination as to what fences might be attractive on the property is linked to chain link fences, which they have prohibited, that's good. There is a sentence in here that says that metal fencing shall be prohibited.
"Notwithstanding the foregoing, owner shall be permitted to install a fence around the detention pond in the event one is required," but it doesn't say what materials.
I had spoken with Mark about that, and he was recommending that we install the word wrought iron and we could even cross out, I guess, metal fencing shall be prohibited, but he wanted to put owner shall be permitted to install a wrought iron fence around the detention pond in the event.
I like that.
Okay.
Paragraph J, permitted uses. "No more than 40% of the property shall be used for retail uses, which include but not limited to retail store, cafe, bistro, et cetera." I think I know where they're coming from, that they want to have those things inside the retirement community.
Right.
And that makes a lot of sense. This language doesn't do it, however. This language says that they would go ahead and use a bistro for public consumption if they want to.
Right.
So if they want to go ahead and continue with that language, that's fine, but there should be something added at the end that says, "To be used only by the residents and their families."
Okay.
I don't want you to go get your hair cut there. There's also a whole scheme of other things that aren't addressed in these restrictions, and I'm just going to throw them out there, and I'd like to hear from some of the other commission members as to whether or not they believe we ought to be addressing those at this stage. Amenities, walking trails, benches. In the other PUDs which we've done, we have required certain amenities, and one of them is walking trails, and I think they indicated that there would be some sidewalks or something around this one?
There is a sidewalk. In addition to the brick sidewalk that connects it to the neighborhoods, they have an additional sidewalk around their facility.
Okay, there's nothing in here saying that there will be one.
It's actually on the site plan. It was in the report that was presented two meetings ago.
Okay. The site plan, is that going to be part of the legislation?
Yes.
And is it going to say that?
We will make sure that the site plan is included in the declarations of the covenants.
And the sidewalks and parking layout will be as set forth in the easement?
As shown, yes.
Okay. Are we concerned about stormwater detention?
That would fall under the caveat of have to follow all the ordinances.
Right.
The zoning ordinance.
They placed K, which is code compliance, in there because that will be, that will be required when they do submit their building plans at that time. We do have a, the development already has a built-in detention area, and then if we wanted to request an extra one, which is why they put that fencing language in there, because we may be requesting that on the site if need be, our early projections indicate from our engineering team that one won't be needed, that the development will actually be sufficient, but just in case, we wanted to put that language in there.
Reason I bring that up is that on other PUDs, what we have adopted is additional language indicating that for any stormwater detention areas, that the city has given an easement for the purpose of ingress and egress so that we can but don't have to clean out the stormwater detention base, and that we have to because the owner isn't doing it, then we have the right to go ahead and charge them. But that needs to be taken care of in advance because it's an easement that will be granted into that durations.
Okay. We can request that. If they don't have one on their property, we actually already have that through the TIF. It's my understanding, is that right, Mr. Coladish?
It's correct.
But if they wanted to have one in there, I guess we can put in here that, we can add an "I" talking about any easements being required. You're saying we have to do that ahead of time? Could we do that at the, at the building plan review time and have them come back to council, should that be required?
I would imagine that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just going to tick a couple of things off, and you tell me whether or not I'm all wet. Do we need an agreement in this document indicating that there is an agreement not to subdivide the property any further?
I think if they want to subdivide the property, it would have to, it would violate the covenants restriction of this, especially with permitted uses, so they'd have to come back, because that would be considered a major change to the planned development.
Right. Yeah, it would have to go back for us in council because it would be a change to the PD.
Correct.
Well, there's nothing in?
We have that in the zoning code. It talks, in the zoning code, it specifically talks about subdivision, so that would be covered under that section.
How about any restrictions concerning signs, fuel containers, statements the utilities have to be underground, anything like that?
They put that code compliance in there because they didn't, they don't have their signed plans, but they would be required to follow it after the B2 district in the zoning code that would be required. So it just says any development that goes out there, they would be required to uphold those standards.
And do our current standards require the utilities to be underground?
They do not, our current standards, here, I don't think our utilities are required to be underground. What other utilities would be required to be?
Well, telephone poles, let's get rid of the telephone poles. You know, sometimes we have PUDs that we require the utilities all be underground for the purpose of, you know, eye pollution.
If we want to require that, we could, we could throw something in there.
This would be the place where we would require, if that's what we want to do.
Is that a restriction in the TIF already?
I don't believe that's a restriction of the TIF.
I don't think we have. Everything goes underground right now.
It is underground. I mean, if we want to throw under "I" and talk about utilities and put something in there, we can certainly run an "I."
I'd like to see that.
You mean an "L"?
An "L."
An "L," I know, sorry. Not a "L" but a "H."
Utilities would be underground. I guess I'm not concerned about any outbuildings or other detached structures because the ordinance will set for?
Correct, requirements for that.
What the location of the buildings are on the plat plan.
And those would be considered accessory, and if they're not on the site plan, they're not allowed.
Correct.
Okay. Are we concerned about the maintenance and upkeep of the sidewalk on the exterior, not the ones we're putting in, but the exterior sidewalk? Whose responsibility is that?
It would be the owner's responsibility for that.
And where's that indicated?
It's in our general.
It's in our code, code requirements now.
How about a prohibition on vehicle storage, like RVs, house trailers, campers, things like that? This is a large tract of land. They're going to have parking. I don't know that RVs are conducive to senior citizens living, but do we need to have a prohibition in our declarations for that?
I wouldn't think so. We do have requirements in the zoning code that talks about RV parking and large equipment as well. I'd already addressed that in the zoning code. We would just make them follow those same requirements, the same as the other developments would have to.
Well, why don't we put one in, just like we do with the utilities and other statement indicating that vehicle storage, including but not limited to house trailers, RVs, campers, et cetera, are prohibited. Likewise, and a lot of this is a lot of nitpicking, but at the same time, it's what PUDs are all about. Do we want to go ahead and restrict or legislate concerning any solar panels, flagpoles, TV dishes, antennas, things like that?
I don't know. I mean, if you, if you're comfortable putting that in there, we're certainly adding these, we could add language to that if you'd like. Once again, I would just fall back to what?
It's not about the media, it's not about us. So I don't know what you guys are feeling about any of these things that I've been talking about.
I would think anything that they do after the site plan, if they were to add those kind of things, that would still have to come back.
Yeah, they have to meet our code requirements. Anything that's not specifically mentioned in the covenants would be required to meet our codes, is what they're basically saying in K. So we do have provisions on those, the same as we do with sheds and things of that nature.
Yeah, but?
But I think to Alice Moore, he wants to know if you guys want to specifically put this in the covenants.
What specific language would you like to see in it?
Well, just that there are certain things that are prohibited in this PUD, solar panels, TV dishes, antennas, swimming pools, clotheslines, things of that nature. We have required that those we put into our PUDs, elsewhere in the city.
But wouldn't they, if they didn't put it on the site plan, and were approving the site plan as part of the covenants, wouldn't they by their own rules not be allowed to put those in because it's not shown on the site plan? If they wanted to include that, wouldn't they have to come back before the council and the planning commission as a major change?
Clotheslines are major changes?
No, but swim pools and things of that nature, yeah.
Yeah. Why even put ourselves through that if we can just put a two-sentence paragraph in the restrictions indicating that these items are prohibited?
Okay.
That way everybody knows, we're all on the same page.
Okay.
That's all I had. Is it, that's not enough? And we had talked before the meeting a little bit, Tim, that we need to make sure that the site plan, including parking layout, the location of the buildings and things of that nature, are incorporated into the restricted covenants as a part of the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I've been ranting. Does anybody have, no, don't laugh, Dave. Does anybody have any additional suggestions, additions, deletions, comments, disagreements on anything that I just spoke?
Tim, the covenants that are up there and what we see in print, these are covenants that have been approved in other situations, under developments.
I think what the developer tried to do is mock the subdivision of the covenant from the GM subdivision, just located on Prime Court, just down the street. I think that's where they got the basis and the meat of it. Certainly didn't address all the concerns that were brought up here, but if we can add those to it, I'm sure we could do that.
The one concern I had is that the City of Troy has at least some input or control over anything different, and that would be through our zoning ordinances, correct? I mean, that was concerning me, that from my personal, I'm in favor of the program, the development. I've had a chance to see the one in Franklamouth, and I think it would be a good accent to that area. It also has great potential as we try to develop the TIF with other different kinds of businesses. I think it has great potential for us. So I'll be honest with you, I, I think my questions have been answered to the point where I feel comfortable with it and with, with the covenants that you have in place. If there's some tweaks, fine. I, I'll just tell you right up front, I think it's a great opportunity for us in an area that we need to develop, and I think it has great potential for future development because of that development itself. I was really, really concerned with the safety issue, and that was more in the, how much traffic we would end up in, in discussing that. I think that's not, as is more minimal than I thought it was going to be. That's my opinion, so.
Well, we'll talk about it next, but that's how I feel. Any more comments about the restrictions?
Question for Tim, since you've been talking to Mr. Murphy, it sounds like a lot of the, the concerns and changes, you've already talked to him, and he's amenable to making those. Do you see anything on this list that he might want some further clarification on?
I don't think there's much on the list he would have any issues with, so that because I don't think they're expecting to do most of the things that we're going to be putting on there. I did talk to him on Friday and yesterday regarding maybe some of the concerns that would we have, and he was certainly open to any language modification that could be made. So I could certainly take this stuff back to him, or if approval is made with the conditions that he approves it, we can certainly work that out.
And it's important to note, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Murphy is out of state, he's on the West Coast. If he had really needed to be here, he has representation here. I think he could have made it, but he does have other conflicts, and it's a pretty long plane ride, so.
No problem. Okay, that was the first phase. Apparently, there's no additional comments concerning declarations. The second phase was the traffic impact study.
Correct.
Do you have a report on that?
Yes, I do. Instead of me trying to cipher through this report, the author of the report is actually here. It's of Oaks Construction, it's Richard Oaks and his son Jason, and I just thought it would be probably easier for the commission if they came up and went through and explained the traffic study other than myself trying to interpret it for you.
Mr. or Mr. Oaks, would you come forward and please state your name and address?
My name is Richard Oaks, Oaks Engineering at 1459 1397 Jackson Road, Bend, Illinois. And my son Jason is here, who did into the modeling that we put together sort of at the last minute. Just as a point of reference, since I only know a couple of you, personal note, Gil has already heard this, I was born on Stanfield, just east of Worsham's Pike in Old Farmhouse. In 2003, Oaks Engineering is the one that fixed the traffic circle downtown the way it's currently operated, and I just came across an old newspaper clipping that they did in 2003 where police teams indicated that the traffic accidents had dropped 30% or something like that in a very short period of time. To that end, we were contacted to perform the, I really want to call it a traffic impact study, I'm joking, I'm joking. I think I called it a traffic analysis report, I think that's the title of it says. And what I'd just like to do, Jim, if you could just jump to the diagrams, the first group of diagrams, it has some numbers on it. Now, that's, that's the, just, yeah, that's what I'm saying. What we did is the, looked at the public right of way, just east of Experimental Farm in the upper left-hand corner of the street, and then also just north of where the hotel is, sort of the lower right-hand corner of the street. And Jason set out two traffic counts, as I've annotated in the report, that collect data for 24 hours and 50-minute time intervals, and from that, we selected the peak hour, and we used those numbers as depicted up here in the lower left-hand corner, the existing traffic is the numbers that are above the arrow, if you will, and such for the AM and PM time curves, and we're just looking at the AM now. And then, based on the information obtained from the developers, I went into the recognized standard, the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineering Trip Generation Tables, which I've mentioned in the reports, and looked at the land uses as applicable to the land use intended for this site, and came up with the numbers that are in blue, which are really all visible below the arrow there. And so then, shall I say, simply added the existing traffic to the new traffic that the site is expected to generate, to get the total number of cars that would be out there at the locations depicted. Pretty much the bottom line of all of this is that the, if you look at the PM, I'm going to go ahead to the next one. Below the arrowhead, going westbound approaching Experimental Farm, you'll see a number eight. Inbound off of Experimental Farm, you'll see a number eight. Northbound at the hotel, you'll see a number eight. And southbound at the hotel, you'll see a number six. During the peak hours of the traffic that exists out there now, which is represented, those numbers, the highest of which is eight vehicles per hour, is the expected additional traffic that the site will generate based on the intended land use using the Institute of Transportation Engineering Trip Generation of that duration. So the bottom line of all of this is, when you grind through all these numbers, which is all those numbers that were ahead of this, it comes down to a maximum situation of adding eight vehicles an hour. If you take 60 minutes in an hour divided by 80, it comes out to one car, an average of 72 minutes, which, not trying to minimize anything and hating to use the word, that's nothing. In the scheme of things, in the world of traffic engineering, eight cars an hour is respectively nothing. So that's the bottom line of all of this, is this particular land use is well-fitted for this site. It's only going to generate a minimalistic amount of additional traffic to that which is already out there using this roadway network system, and I would encourage you to approve it, post-education. It's a really good land use for this particular site compared to the kinds of things that could be built under the B2 zone and additional traffic that that will generate. So we do have a model, if you want to see it. I'll stop talking if anybody's got any questions.
I think there are some questions. Did you take, in your analysis, did you take into consideration the number of residents that may have cars on the property as well as the number of employees in the structure itself?
The way that is handled in the profession, and the way it's handled in the Institute of Transportation Engineering Trip Generation Tables, all of those things, including delivery vehicles, and the little blips that were also included in the report that explain for each of the specific land uses, what all of that took into account, they actually take that into account as far as employees, or the number of dwellings, if you will, that are included in there. It takes into account all the delivery vehicles, it takes into account all of the activities that would be going to and from the site for that specific kind of definition of land use. So the short version of that is, it's all taken into account.
I want to personally thank you for straightening out the circle.
Oh. There's more things I'd like to do.
The, any other questions, Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We had a brief discussion yesterday about the fact that your analysis used the public part of the, of Town, Town Road, but did not look at the private section closer to West Main Street. Can you remind me and then the committee why that was and what your thinking is regarding that section and, and any impact that this development would have on that section?
There's two ways we can handle this. I did, and I'm going to use this unprofessional term, conjure up some traffic down at the traffic signal at 41 and the traffic signal at the Shell Station there, and also the internal T intersection, and this is based on field observation that I had personally done yesterday morning and last evening during the peak traffic times as depicted. And so we do have that set up in a model based on those traffic manipulations, based on the traffic, the 34,000-plus vehicles a day that's using State Route 41 out there, and assigning that traffic using. 41 out there, and the siding of that traffic using, well, Highway Department of Transportation general assumptions for design hours and things like that. And then based on my personal observations at the internal T intersection, as well as the traffic signal, um, I'll say it this way, I manipulated the numbers to be representative of that which I saw out there in the field. And so then, I modeled that, using a micro-model that actually moves little cars around like little ants on a picture, so that you can actually see, and then, um, changed or added eight vehicles an hour on the move, on the, um, movements that would be included at that internal T intersection and also at the existing traffic signal on Route 41 via Shell Station. And, uh, the model does as good as it can, and it's the recognized standard, actually pretty much throughout the same, and it, uh, once again, eight vehicles an hour in the scheme of things is ministry. And we have that here available if you want to see that. Is that where you, where you want to go with that topic?
Yeah, I mean, you, you mentioned, uh, a little earlier that you're looking at one car every seven and a half minutes, uh, that it was minimal if any, if no impact. I just want to make sure that that same recommendation, that same, uh, conclusion you can draw when you bring in that, that other area, the private area of the roadway, and it sounds like you're saying, yes, that's consistent.
Correct. That was what was intuitively clear to me, uh, because of quote-unquote, only eight vehicles per hour, but then when I overlaid that number on the model, looked specifically at the model down at that, uh, the Shell Station, its traffic signal in the internal T intersection, it just reinforced that professional opinion. And I'd be happy to show that to you, we don't have to collect around the counter if you don't have a way of hooking it into your nice screen up here to see that, if you want to do that. I, I have it with me, it's all cranked up and ready to go.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Oaks? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. If you got any questions, just.
Okay. Uh, any other items for staff on this issue? The first action that needs to be taken on this issue is to whether or not we want to have a public hearing. What is the desire of the commission?
We are not required to have a, a public hearing here, but there will definitely have to be one at the council level, so there will be a public hearing.
Correct.
At least one. I, I, I would recommend that we not hold a public hearing.
And is that a motion?
That is a motion, thank you.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. McGary, second the motion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tetterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Motion is passed, planning commission will not hold a public hearing.
Okay, next, uh, we are to make a recommendation, not make a recommendation, further table, whatever you want to do, on the requested rezoning request, taking into consideration the traffic impact study we just heard and the protective covenants, restrictions and agreements that were submitted to us or as amended.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I say something? Mr. Colodish would like to confer with Mr. Davis for a moment before you proceed, would that be a problem?
Um, I don't have any problem with that. Let's make it quick.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Did you pause the?
Were you okay to ask the commission?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, if you would, please. Name and address, please.
Alex Colodish, Harson Investments, uh, 23 O'Leary Barhouse Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45419. I just wanted one, one moment to address, because Mark Murphy had asked me, as the seller, to, to be here on his behalf, and it was simply with the matter of, um, the, the cladding material of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And I had just spoken to him beforehand, and, uh, Mr. Murphy had indicated, as Mr. Deers had said, that he, he's looking to do the stone, if possible. The problem is that he doesn't know yet what the pricing of the stone is going to be relative to the brick. And he wanted to be very clear, he didn't want to have an issue of mis, of miscommunication down the line where he would like to do the stone, but if the pricing is cost prohibitive, he would do the brick, which I, which I thought, we always want something that's very nice in our developments, and I saw both models, I saw this, the brick model, and it was very nice, and I thought it looked great, but I didn't want anybody to feel like they were being misrepresented, and I, I wanted to make that clear, that, that's, that's his position.
Does Mr. Murphy want us to further table this action then, until he can go get some pricing there for his stone?
No, no, he didn't want to table it, he, he thought that, and I agree with him, that the brick model looked great, and the stone model looks great. I didn't think that there was an issue with aesthetics on the stone versus the brick. I didn't know that that was an issue, so.
I think what I'm hearing from the commission is that they'd rather have the stone, unless I'm hearing it wrong.
Well, I, I'll share my opinion, I, the more, the, the less siding, the better. Stone would be my first choice, as high up as it can go. Brick would be my second choice. Certainly either option in the renderings are attractive, uh, so, you know, if we're looking at, let's call them A, B, and C on attachment A, uh, C, B, and then A would be my order of priority.
And I don't think Mr. Murphy has any problem committed to a stone or the brick, and he actually prefers a stone. I just wanted to make it clear, you know, on percentages, that he has, I don't think he has any problem saying that it would be a percentage of stone or a percentage of brick, but he just doesn't know whether stone or a brick, one of those two. Does that make sense? And especially since the rest of our development, we had always thought that it was going to be brick because the rest of our development is in the brick, with Park Corner North, the other buildings are either Ebus or brick, and we actually always thought that the brick would be a, a very nice complement to the overall development. And then when the stone came up, I said, yeah, that would be nice also, but the issue is simply that I didn't want to have anybody misrepresented here.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think if, I think once it goes to council, by the time it goes to council, we really need to know, or they, the council really needs to know before they make a decision. Um, I, I have no problems with the covenants, however they want to be worded, at this point, at least as a recommendation, either being, uh, B or C, because both of them appear to have the same percentage of, uh, non-siding material, either brick or stone, as a percentage of the elevation.
So, basically you're saying that you would like to have the, the C elevation, but it can be composed of either brick or stone facing?
Sure, if that makes it easier, yeah.
Anybody else have an issue with that? Okay. Well, once again, we need to make a recommendation to City Council concerning this issue, does the commission have any action they want to undertake?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ted.
Um, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, uh, the development, uh, with the condition that the covenants and restrictions, um, are amended pursuant to our discussions, specifically, uh, most specifically, I guess, if that's a, a phrase, uh, Mr. Cappers', um, language, if he would be so kind to share it with staff and, and the developer.
Is there a support for that motion?
I'll support that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tetterington?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion is passed, unanimous vote.
Mr. Davis, I'll get with you to go ahead and go over, uh, the changes if you hadn't been taking notes.
I tried to write down as fast as I could.
I'll be happy to do that, or if you want, if you wrote some things down, then get me a draft and I'll take a look at it.
All right.
Um, does staff have anything else to, to come between the commission?
Nothing further, thank you.
Does the commission have anything they want to discuss? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Johnson moved to adjourn, Mrs. Mahan seconded, always the favorite, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, stand adjourned.